I'd like to call this meeting to order, September 22nd, 2025. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, which is a republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Okay, Mrs. Thompson.
Present.
Mrs. Rosenau, present. Mrs. McQ, present. Mrs. Bob seems absent. Mrs. Drewitt, present. Mr. DeVos.
Present.
And Ms. Gross, present.
Do you motion to adopt the agenda as presented?
One amendment.
You have a change.
Under action, they, under disciplinary area, we could change that to closed session.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the amended agenda.
I move to support the agenda as amended. Support.
We have a motion by Member Rosnell, supported by Member McQ, to adopt the agenda as amended for the September 22nd, 2025 regular meeting as presented. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carried. Consent agenda?
Under the consent agenda, I approve the minutes from the regular board meeting of August 25th, 2025 as presented. We also approve the general fund bills as presented. Under personnel, we have a new hiring of Alyssa Allard, elementary parapro.
Support.
We have moved by Member Rosnell, supported by Member Drewitt, to approve the items under consent agenda as presented. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Do we have any board recognitions or celebrations? Okay, hearing none at this time, administrative reports. Who would like to go first?
Picture day for DSRP and preschool is October 7th. Retake day is November 13th for all the students. Officer Nowitzki has been meeting with each class to have safety talks with the students. Teachers have been going through PBIS lessons for positive behavior in their classes, hallways, bathrooms, cafeteria, and on the playground. We also had the PBIS class comfort day for students to practice good behavior on the bus. B-buck drawings are every Friday for students to earn prizes out of our showcase. And the B-buck card comes around once a month. Congratulations to our first B-buck drawing winners. Junior jackets, cheerleaders, and football players have been following school spirit and doing great at the games and practice. K-1 and special education teachers were trained in MSA over the summer, and they have been implementing it in their classrooms to help students learn their letters and sounds through a multisensory approach. Our upper L math classrooms have been coming alive with building thinking classrooms. Our research-based practice where students are out of their seats and collaboratively problem-solving at vertical whiteboards. Monkeys fundraiser ordering is open until September 23rd, and flowers will be delivered on October 6th. We appreciate the support for our building. Fundraising goes towards our PBS programs, assemblies, and school events. Fifth grade band fittings for September 17th. The students are very excited to try out different instruments and pick their favorites.
Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Any questions for elementary? Hearing none, do you know?
All right. So I think we're off to a pretty good start here at the junior senior high. Positivity in the hallways, lunchroom, and classrooms has been a focus. Actually, Mr. Lombardo's mentor from MHSAA was in last week, and he praised the feeling of positivity in the hallways when he walked through to Mrs. Emming. Student excitement for all the new and improved spaces is evident. They walk by the weight room, they see the walls going up, so they see that something is happening. Staff have been working diligently in action work teams to address areas of need or focus for them. We have identified things that need solutions based on data or observable patterns such as tardiness and hallway roaming, improving test capacity and growth mindset in the students, improving staff morale, increased student rewards in PBIS, and reviewing our curriculum for alignment and rigor. Each group is developing their own procedures, plans, and events to improve the school. NWE and M-step data is being reviewed routinely at every PD, and then we're working with the teachers to work on their STING lessons for areas of deficiency. We also have re-rostered the STING for this year, and we'll be making changes every time we take the NWEA. The new IXL program has been rolled out, and I think everybody's kind of excited about how it's very targeting to each student's specific need. The new zap procedures began last week. Students will be zapped for a full week with more responsibility resting on them to get their sheet signed and their work, so a little bit less on the teachers, more on the students, especially at the high school end. STING teachers spent the first two weeks reviewing the student handbook and the code of conduct, reviewing all of the things, tardy, phone, and disciplinary, and the reason for STING. There was a lot of talk about what STING used to be and what the purpose currently is of STING, so all the teachers, and we sent out a one-page info sheet to parents. The testing team has set fall testing dates for 9:25, 10:1, and 10:2, and they've developed some rewards for student growth. We're focusing on growth, not just hitting a target. So any growth by any student will get a candy bar. Significant growth above their goal is ice cream, and then a special lunch for the STING class with the highest average growth. We've also worked in a bonus for the 11th and 12th graders regarding their midterms because that's food for them. The new marketing media course is in full swing with students working to further develop their skills for real-life application, including the new African Athletic Instagram account, a possible athletic TikTok, Facebook and marketing for the school. And Mr. Marrow just received that they're going to have a certificate of completion through digital media marketing, so all the students will have an actual work certificate for the marketing. Multiple teachers will be attending professional development throughout the year. We have four new teachers attending the new teacher academy, plus the building thinking classrooms. Ms. Toleme just went to the Johnston's yearbook session, and Ms. Dines at the Second Shift Academy. And then Mrs. Phillips and student council and all of the admin are busy planning, preparing for homecoming 2025 to include the elementary school over here in some of the festivities, making it one big giant assembly for the whole community, so we're excited about that. And then we just confirmed we're going to have an anti-voting character assembly brought to us by Super U. We're going to do the elementary school and then the junior high, and hopefully over here.
Thank you. Sounds like a lot of positive, really cool things.
Can I ask you, can I ask a question, please?
Sure.
Okay. Just a question. Last school year, I think the conversation happened with Jessie and a few parents and so forth about telephone use, and we had discussed, a group of us or whatever, about students with IEPs and 504s with medical conditions, that the state law is saying that they can use their phones in the classroom or carry them, and the agreement was that the IEP students and 504s were going to be getting burner phones, so they're not carrying their cell phones, so there's no social media apps on their phone. So I guess I just wanted to see where we're at with that for these students that have medical needs and have, you know, needs that they may have to call their parents for or call for emergencies that they're not able to maybe down to the office and make a phone call, but this was thoroughly discussed regarding numerous students and myself, Mr. Sikowski.
So I do not have information on that, but I can look it up and give that to you.
Or I can find the email.
I have that.
You do have it?
I have all that, which I do not know what law you're talking about. I've never seen that law.
It was posted actually in Inco Bay School, and then I looked up the law, it comes right up.
Can you cite the law?
Yeah.
But we do have our procedures in place for anybody that needs it per their disability.
Yeah. Well, I know, but sir, people have been trying to get that, and it's not happening.
Yeah, we have it. I have all the paperwork, because Truand created it for us.
Okay, okay. And just, you know, a couple weeks in, and now one of these students are being taken care of.
Yeah, yeah. Anybody whose factor signs up, that they must have. And then, like I said, there's a formal paperwork that Truand created for us last year after Jessie asked me about this.
Okay.
Sent it to Truand.
Okay.
Okay.
Well, I know that they have occurred with some IEPs or 504 meetings and medical documentation that it is in process with some students right now.
Yeah, yeah.
So we think that...
We have the paperwork, yeah.
So...
Well, I'll make sure I get it for you.
Okay, thank you.
Good. All right, Mr. Lombardo, APAB.
Okay, so first fire drill last week. We're implementing green-red card systems for teachers in their classes. If everyone's good, they hold a green card. Red card is obviously, you know, something going on with their roster, so that was last week went well. Ensuring that all teachers are going to be at front of lines and visibles with their green and red cards for admin to check in and see. All teachers signed up for IXL and have students rostered in their classes. Students are completing initial diagnostic assessments to set them at levels, mathematics and language arts. IXL will primarily be used for personal student growth plans for NWEA or M-step. Fall sports are in full swing with all teams competing hard, working towards growth each day. We have new sets of volleyball post and equipment being ready to order. Infield dirt ordered for baseball and softball field upgrades. It's actually delivered, which is great. Preparing winter sport package schedules due to limited space for the upcoming season, so myself and Mrs. Emming are working through that currently. Reaching out to alternative locations to see availability for indoor practice space if needed. As Mrs. Coppins kind of referenced, beginning Yellow Jacket Athlete of the Week, so coaches will be able to nominate an athlete. Athlete can be highlighted on our school website and social media. And then as again, Mrs. Coppins stated, working with a marketing media teacher to start and keep going on our athletics Instagram page.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are they using the red-green cards for fire drills across the street, too?
We required it this year because nobody was using it. I learned that when I was in, and I said, "This is not going to happen." So I implemented that and created the procedure for everybody over the summer, and then we rolled it out.
That's awesome.
Yeah.
Okay, Mrs. Rector, can you run over now a report, or...
Yeah, just a couple highlights. First and foremost, auditors are wrapping up. They've been quiet for the last couple of weeks, so that's always a good sign, so should be getting some final reports for them over the next few weeks here, and then they'll be ready to present at the... Depending on their schedule, if they're able to attend the October board meeting, or else they'll be at November at the very latest. So I'll be talking to Karen, who is the partner at GH5, who has presented the last few years, and get her on the schedule and let you guys know as soon as I know if it's going to be October or November. And then the only other thing I wanted to touch on was there's still no approved budget at the state level. There is some concern statewide that if there's not an agreement reached fairly soon, that our October state aid payment could be in jeopardy of not being received. If that is the case, I guess I just wanted to pass along that we kind of had anticipate, anticipated that there might be something going on at the state level with the budget, so we... I brought back to you guys back in May the state aid note. We utilized it, so we are good for a cash flow standpoint, even if our October and November state aid payment does not come through. So we're in a good spot right now, and I just, I guess I just wanted to pass that along that you guys are all there. But that is it.
Thank you. All right, rest of reports are in here. Any other highlights in there? Still there that you wanted to present, or else everyone's just had them to read?
I'm ready to start, Inc. I had something to say to add, but I didn't write it down, so I'm good for now.
All right, thank you. Now we have the Four CCF MCS Educational Fund. Would you like to introduce our guest?
Sure. We have Kathy Dickens from the Four County Community Foundation, and her and I have been in communication and we started to make the audit.
Yes.
And I thought it would be really valuable for the board to hear what she's proposing, and should the board have questions, they can do that discussion and potentially approve or not to abort it of this.
All right, very good. Well, thank you for having me. I do appreciate your time. I too am a retired school administrator, thirty-plus years, and so I really, really greatly appreciate the work that everyone does here, community parents, board members, that beautiful district. With that being said, I've been with the foundation for six years, going on seven, and I love the space of being a grant maker because I know that grants fill gaps often that we have in budgets. Teacher wants to do something extraordinary, and they didn't know about it until just now, and the budget doesn't necessarily always lend itself to say to a teacher, "Yes, go ahead and do that." So grants really do fill gaps. I myself am a grant writer for school districts outside of our current service area, so I know the significance of grants. All that being said, within our foundation, we have kind of a core of communities that we traditionally serve, and we've started district funds for them, and essentially it's this. It is, and we have granted to Memphis, by the way, your Maker Space and some of your equipment in here was at least partially funded by them. So we have a partnership that's established, but what I come here for is hopefully to strengthen that partnership. Just as a teacher or your superintendent had applied on a quarterly grant cycle, which is our traditional grant cycle, they apply for some Maker Space equipment. We review it on a quarterly cycle, and we say a or nay, or we say partial or full. What I'd like to do, we have X number of funds with which to grant each year. Last year, or current year, I should say, about $350,000 we have for grant making, whereas we have about $850,000 to $900,000 for scholarships. And so what I'd like to do is I'd like to build out the side of our purse that we issue dollars for grants from. So I've gone to each of the districts in order to grow that. Nothing's ever going to be taken away or removed from you. You will always have an option to apply to us. I wanted to say that. Nothing will ever change. But what I'd like to do is I'd like to partner with you, if you're interested, in a grow of Memphis Community Education Fund within our foundation, that we would help market to the community and say, "Hey, if you really like what your teachers are doing and would like to afford them a greater opportunity for quarterly grants, help us kind of build up some more money for just Memphis schools." So in comes the Memphis Education Fund. Essentially, if, there's a couple of different things I'd like to highlight. One, there is no donation, as you know, that is too small. And certainly not a donation that's too large. And so we would welcome anything from a couple dollars to a thousand dollars. We can take, of course, one-time donations to your community fund. We could take recurring monthly donations, which a lot of people, you know, appreciate and can kind of handle. And a community foundation is a beautiful thing because we can take some untraditional gifts, too, and I just highlight one in particular, and that would be estate planning. And if I say it with a smile on my face, kind of like a crazy person, but I have my estate plan done, and I'm glad I do. I've left some dollars aside for my home community foundation here on County. I used to serve on that board, started a fund with them, so my estate plan. And that may sound strange, but some of our biggest, biggest gifts to the foundation, some citizen suction in 1987, have been from educators and people who really were human service leaders. They didn't earn millions of dollars a year, but they kind of lived on the small side, and when they aged out, they're like, "I want to do something great with this. I want to leave a bigger gift to my school district." Well, I don't know, I'd have to actually ask the current chief financial officer if you're prepared to take an estate plan. I think most school districts would say, "Well, not really," but we can, and we do that regularly. So if somebody in Memphis or a graduate in a long-term Memphis had a heart to do that, they could also leave an estate plan, get a two-year fund. And so it's not only the quarterly cycle or the one, one donation, it could be, you know, a larger donation. Also, people, if they have a heart of property, you know, if there's a local property they don't want, they don't have a use for, they sell it and give the proceeds to the school district, this fund could take that, too. So simple gifts, complex gifts are what community foundations do in that space. Again, I'm not promoting that we take anything away from you. I'm really here to add, we currently don't, we didn't have school district funds, and shame on me, I'm a school administrator at heart, and I've been there six years, why aren't we doing that? And so my board's enamored with it, like, "Why not?" We've just kind of raised the funding available for school districts. So I'm happy to take questions. There's a lot more I could say, but I know you're at a Board of Education meeting, it's beautiful. Excuse me, outside. You don't necessarily want me to stand up here and talk for three hours, but trust me, I'm good if you want. I'd be happy to entertain any questions.
I think it's, I think it's great. I mean, why would... Yeah, right? So you would obviously do handle the advertising and the promoting of this out to the community.
And actually, I have a draft, we've not published it, but if you go to our website or our Facebook page, you'll see that we have published for districts that are like all in already. And the fact that you were a little later than done is actually my fault. I was supposed to be here last month, and I didn't show, and I'm so sorry. I think I had a transfer, I was at a different school, but we did make flyers, and I'll just send it around. And again, we haven't published this at all. We wouldn't do that to you. We don't intend to be invasive, we intend to partner. And so if it is something you are interested in with board approval, superintendent, it has been great to work with in the past, we would, we would market it on your behalf to see that the QR code, so that if anybody used the QR code or hit a PayPal link on Facebook or LinkedIn or on your website, on our website, it would take them right to your fund, they'd make a donation, and that's where the money would go. This is designated donation. In other words, somebody donates to your fund, it's not going anywhere else except for Memphis schools. The rest of our grant review dollars, a lot of them are unrestricted, so they're generalized, but if anybody donated to your fund, it would go to your, to your educators, so it's very specific in that way. So to me, I just think it's kind of a natural partnership. We're all about making communities strong, so we often grant to historic societies and civic clubs and school districts, food pantries, you name it, we grant. But why not build, build some asset for you to draw from?
So is the application process to, for any potential recipients the same as it is for your other grants that you offer? There's an application and a selection process?
Yes, yes, it's a quarterly grant cycle, and the way our grants work is if a teacher or parapro or coach wanted to sit down and, you know, apply, they then ultimately have to send that grant application to the superintendent, and then the superintendent kind of endorses it. Superintendent should always know what's going on, and always want to know what's going on, so they, they, you know, say, "Okay, great, that's a awesome," right? It aligns with their work. And then it goes into our quarterly grant cycle. And it's just that sometimes, you know, especially fourth quarter, which we're now, sometimes our purse is a little drained, right? No different than mom and dad's at the end of the year. So we don't have a lot, so we're just looking to build. This is also a great way, I think, to partner. We are going to parent teacher conferences in other school districts and setting up a table so that you're not asking, we're just representing your fund and answering the questions that they need. So, you know, we do the grant review, we do the grant award, we do all the accounting on the donated side. We give you a report, however often you want, monthly for your board meeting, we can do that, quarterly, annually. We do the audit, so we do all the back office stuff, and so again, just a purse to kind of develop for you, and the hope is to get it out to the community so that people who love Memphis schools can donate, you know, give where you live, right? What better place to give to than your school district?
So is this a general donation, or is somebody allowed to state specifically, like, "I want to leave this donation, and I want to specifically go to this department," or is it not, is it not set up like that?
No, typically we don't set it up that way. Yeah, I would say it's just a general donation, and then that way, all of the money is available, you know, for any school person who might apply. That's not to say if they said something that we wouldn't tell a superintendent, like, hey, we got this check, and they say, "If possible, this is where we'd like it." You know, we could, we could kind of work with that, but I think general is best because, you know, even, I started a STEM fund back in Haren County, the grade's K-8, because that's where I served as an administrator, but if they ever needed STEM funding for high school, I wouldn't begrudge that, you know, so I'd answer your question. It's a kind of a general.
Okay, yep, thank you. Now, are donations tax deductible?
Yes.
Okay.
Because we are a 501(c)(3) of, you know, so donations are always tax deductible, which is very important, especially if somebody wanted to make a higher asset, you know, want to make a $150,000 gift, that's going to be pretty important.
Okay, thank you.
Is there any minimum amount that needs to be in there?
Typically, we like, this is an agency fund, so to speak, because the agency is Memphis Schools. Typically, we like $15,000 in there as an endowment, and that's the way these funds are set up, because an endowment is in perpetuity, so it's there for you forever, and it's growing, and you'll always have one you can, you know, grab, grab hold of as far as grant making. That's the wish. However, on these funds, realizing that some people might want to donate $25, and like, I don't, I'm not so sure about that endowment thing. I want it to go to my kids this year, right, Memphis kids. So they can put on there, they can designate whether they'd like it to go to the endowment side, or they'd like immediately spendable. A lot of people, of course, I appreciate, want it immediately spendable. I want today's dollars spent on today's children. So we're, we're a particular fan.
And this would be the same type of funding that St. Clair Community Foundation endowments are, working pretty much the same as those?
Yeah, I mean, I'm really close with Randy Meyer and them. Yeah, they have endowed funds, they're set up the same way, in perpetuity for a particular agency, organization, or purpose.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
So, do we have a motion?
I'm moved to approve the MCS Education Fund Grant Program as presented.
Support.
It was moved by Ms. McQ, supported by Member Rosnell, to approve the MCS Educational Fund Grant Program as presented. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate your time.
Okay, bond update.
Me? You gave me today, unfortunately, couldn't join us. So today, we're presenting the bid award for Bid PAC 4.1, which is the demo portion of the athletics project for the fields across the street at the elementary school and back here, so working on that. So Bart Mallow received 125 contractors that were interested in bidding on this project. Seventy-five actually viewed the project, 23 stated that they were bidding, and a total of 18 bids were received on September 5th. Ourselves, Bart Mallow, and your team all attended post-bids. Everything was found to be in order. We are comfortable with the dollar amount, I think it's actually a little bit below budget for what we would have expected for the demo portion. This was estimated as one large project for both the demo and the new work originally, but this does appear to be below estimates for that, and the total, construction total was $239,265 with a 10% contingency of $23,927, for a total of $263,192.
It's always good to hear it came in under. Yes.
Someone like to make the motion, please, before the discussion?
I move to approve Bid PAC 4.1 award as presented.
Support. It was moved by Member Rosnell, supported by Member DeVos, to approve Bid PAC number 4. 4.1 award as presented. Any discussion?
I think, thanks for the update, it's great. It's exciting, just like you said, the kids are excited. I think once, once, you know, roofs are a necessity, but they're not boring, they're, they are boring, they're not one to look at. This is going to be exciting to watch.
And they said it starts the date after the last football game?
That's my understanding, they're going to get out there as soon as you'll allow, so.
Right, and they have figured out all the transportation ones without having to re-roll?
They're, they're not, they're just going to park on the field and everything will stay the exact same.
That's great. Any other questions? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Bid package approved.
And then if I can just offer a quick update too.
Sure.
Just to let you guys know, the Bid Package 4.2, which is the new work, will be going out at the end of this week on the streets for bid. We'll also be releasing the structural repairs for the gym at the elementary school at the end of this month, very beginning of next month. It'll have quite an exact date at Barton Mallow, so that's on its way too. And then Bid PAC 5 will follow shortly after, at the beginning of October as well, when the ceilings or finishes, the mechanical work.
Great.
And that rounds out the bond calls.
Wow. It's amazing, thank you so much.
Of course, thank you.
Before we go to public comment on the reports, I forgot the student rep. Yes, Mel, would you like to tell us?
So right now, we, in a couple weeks, we're going to have a presentation to the juniors about student reps and to hopefully get a couple members in here and work on that. And then we also, I was, I was speaking to the juniors about who would like an SAT, SAT like prep group for next year. And a lot of them actually were saying yes to that, which I was very happy with that. And one of the members who ended up coming last year, he's looking forward to it again. So I'm hoping can take a little bit more of a leadership role this year. And then I'm working on an Instagram page with all the sports and we can keep our school updated on what functions are happening. So I'm going to try to get in contact with all the sports captains and hopefully we can get it together and all flags around the school so everyone can see the page.
Right, great.
I appreciate your passion, Izzy, thank you so much. You're so, you're always so enthusiastic.
You do.
It is appreciated.
It is. Thank you for your part, yes.
All right, do we have any public comment?
No, we don't have any.
Okay, correspondence, anything? Nothing? Okay, we have action items. We need to go into closed session for the student disciplinary hearing for student number Pardon? The correspondence, we do have the turn-in log notes for August 2025. Need a motion?
Move to go into closed session at 6:34 in accordance with Open Meetings Act 267-1976 for the purpose of student disciplinary hearing, student number 20025-26-1.
We have a motion by Ms. Rosenow, supported by Ms. Drueck, to go into closed session at 6:34 PM for student disciplinary hearing. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Roll call.
Mrs. Thompson?
Yes.
Mrs. Rosenow?
Yes.
Mrs. McHugh?
Yes.
Mrs. Boxing?
Absent.
Mrs. Drueck?
Present.
Mr. DeVos?
Yes.
And Ms. Brooks?
Yes.
Okay, we are now back in open session. Okay, a regular meeting of the Board of Education was held in the junior senior high school library with the boundaries of the district on 22nd of September 25 at 6:00 PM. Whereas, the administration has recommended that a student whose identity is known to the board as 2025-26-1 be permanently expelled for social media posts on the student's account that caused alarm to the school community and created an environment where students and parents were frightened to attend school. The social media post showed the student holding a handgun in his lap, showed a student smoking marijuana, and also show marijuana paraphernalia. School administrators notified the student's parents of the specific charges underlying the discipline recommendation, as well as the date, time, and place of the disciplinary hearing. Pursuant to the request of the student's parents, as authorized by the Michigan Open Meetings Act, Section 8, parentheses 1, parentheses B, Michigan compiled law 15.261, parentheses 1, parentheses B, the disciplinary hearing was conducted in a closed session meeting of the board. The hearing afforded the student and the student's representatives an opportunity to respond to the charges and to present pertinent evidence for the board's consideration. The board has carefully considered all the evidence produced in this student disciplinary hearing. Now, therefore, be it resolved that a preponderance of the evidence establishes that on or around 8/21/2025, the student created and/or posted social media posts on the student's account that caused alarm and fear to the school community on 9/15/25, and created an environment where staff, students, and parents were frightened to attend school. The social media posts showed the student holding a handgun in his lap and showed the student smoking marijuana, and also show marijuana paraphernalia in violation of the school code of conduct. Based on careful consideration of all of the following facts, the board determines that expulsion is warranted: the student's age, the student's disciplinary history, whether the student has a disability, the seriousness of the behavior, whether the behavior posed a safety risk, whether restorative practices are a better option, and whether lesser interventions would address the behavior. The student is permanently expelled from the district. During this time of expulsion, the student may not be on school grounds or attend any functions at the district without prior written approval from an appropriate administrator. The student may petition the board for reinstatement no sooner than September 22, 2027, and possibly be reinstated no sooner than the second semester of the '26-'27 school year. Before the board considers a reinstatement petition, the student must demonstrate successful participation via a weekly attendance log and an appropriate mental health counseling program approved by the board that includes both family, group, and individual counseling that explicitly addresses all of the log entries located in the totality of the student's behavioral log. Demonstrate successful completion of a substance abuse program via certificate of completion and board-approved substance abuse program. Submit to the board competent and credible evidence from an appropriately licensed and credentialed professional that the student does not pose a risk of harm to the student or to others. Establish that the student has not engaged in a conduct during the period of expulsion that may be viewed by the board as detrimental to the student's continued education at the district. Complete to the satisfaction of the board all recommendations contained in any psychological or counseling report. Demonstrate to the satisfaction of the board that the student received educational instruction and cooperatively participated without any behavioral misconduct or failing grades in an educational program outside of Memphis community schools during the period of expulsion. Agreement to adhere to any and all applicable reinstatement requirements should the student be board-approved for reinstatement. Consistent with the revised school code, Sections 11A and 1311, parentheses 1, the board finds that the interests of the district are served by this resolution. Administrators are directed and authorized to implement all terms of this resolution and are delegated all necessary authority to do so. All resolutions and parts of resolutions that conflict with this resolution are hereby
I move to adopt the resolution as read. Support.
We have a motion by Member Rosenow, supported by Member Drueck, to adopt the resolution as read. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Superintendent comments?
I just wanted to point out, as you can see, the, the work inside is moving at rapid pace. The beautiful weight room is, is coming together even faster than originally projected. And that temporary wall right there is where the live broadcast studio, which will be very similar to, like, a TV station, will be, will operate as a class. So those are two major improvement areas that we are very excited about, the students are excited about, because finally, like, as we said, it's not roofs. And it's not boiling. So the roofs are getting inspected this week, but they are completely done and we're very excited about how 4.1 came back, and that's just the demolition, demolition, demolition.
Demolition.
And 4.2 is going to be the really exciting stuff, where you get to see the designs for the field and the track and all the events for track and field. So we are moving right along.
I probably mentioned this in the past meetings, but how long is it going to take for the field and track to be done?
They'll have, they'll, like I said, they'll, like Vicki said, they will start on that the day after.
After, yes, remember.
Last home game, and then that will all be done so that in March, weather permitting, that is where they're going to start the rebuild. And I have been promised, and Barton Mallow has come through on every single promise, that it will be done by our first home football game of 2026.
Oh, cool.
So that's very exciting.
Yes.
And then I'm just really looking forward to getting the, the bid out, she called, I believe, Bid PAC 6, for the repairs for the gym. Because that is also not something fun, but very, very necessary, and I just feel so incredibly blessed that, that, that was, that came out at this time, so that we are able to do that during, because at no point, I mean, it's going to be a chunk, right? So I'm just super excited that that safety issue is going to be addressed and, and outlast definitely all of us. Any questions? Okay, sound like that.
All right, and I just want to say, Sarah, I want to thank you for giving us the opportunity to pause the letter on the club sports versus school-sponsored sports to answer the questions that many board members had prior to it going out. I know it caused you a lot of extra work, but I think that we all feel much more comfortable now that when people have concerns or ask questions, that we have good answers for them. And I, I understand it was a lot more work, I understand it was, like, we told you to do it, you did it, but it just helps us to feel comfortable in following through on defending you and the decision that you made with good answers, so.
And I'm grateful that, that it's out, thank you for that, I deeply appreciate that. And I, I'm very grateful that I've gotten the communications out to one of the groups. And then I contacted the lead of equestrian, because I like to send it to all the families as well. And I've already reached out to the Padies regarding track, track and equestrian, all they're going to need to do is the application, because they already operate like that, but I'm just, so that, that is, I feel very grateful that that was able to get done, so.
And then the only question that was asked of me for, for the future to think of is, it used to be in policy, how do you take a new sport, become a club sport, become a district sponsored sport, Schedule C or whatever, and do we have that written anywhere as a policy?
We do that.
And if not, if that is something that the policy committee can look at doing prior to the end of the school year?
The only thing I would caution about that is remember, every, every Schedule C assignment has to be negotiated.
Exactly.
So as long as that was included, because I, like I said, I present the things for addition, but it's negotiation.
Yeah, if they don't approve it, it doesn't happen.
Yes, right. That's the only thing, but I would be all for that, as long as that was in there.
Yeah, so I think that that's something the policy committee will, will look to. And I, I think it also allows, you know, athletic director to give that information to someone if they're looking at it. And I know that it has been here before, but I think it was a policy that was lost when we translated over to the new one. So I think it would just be a great thing to happen. All right.
Izzy, can I ask you a question, please? Is there any way that you could do us a favor and send out the committees, who's on each committee again, and what our responsibilities actually are on the committees? Because I was talking to one of our board members on the same committee as myself, and it's athletics, and we're not getting called for any meetings, we're not, like, what is our role anymore when we're on these committees? I mean, we have all this change.
Yes, we can take care of that. And one of the other ones that's been brought up is the facilities committee, which you are the only member left on.
I think Marty took me off of that, he took me off.
Okay, well, we might need to look at that, because that is something.
I'm on the facility committee.
Okay.
I, I know that I am.
That the facility meeting used to do, like, a grounds check to repeat times a year. And that has probably, I think since Susan resigned, she was the one that called those meetings, is something we need to do. But yeah, Laura and I can work together and try to come up with, and Sarah's input, you know, what's expected of each committee and go by that.
I think it was passed, you, you sent us one, a new one, last January after the organizational meeting.
So, Chris, you are on it.
My name is, too, thinking for the grounds.
Yeah, Marty changed that.
So who was on facilities?
Leslie and Chris.
Usually we have like three on, that's why.
Why are you on with us?
I can take grounds back, I did it before, I mean, I, I, no trouble.
Absolutely, I can maybe. I mean, it's, it's just something that it's a yearly walkthrough, just looking at our grounds and facilities.
For a couple years.
Exactly. Who is your chair of that committee?
I think it, I don't know.
It was probably Marty.
Probably Marty, and it was Sue before, so.
Yeah, it was, it was Marty was the chair, but Lisa and Sue were very involved in that one.
So now it's Leslie, Chris, and so the three of you need to get together at some point, decide who's going to be the chair, because the chairs of that committee is the one that's going to call meetings.
Okay.
I just want to say in closing, I have something positive. I know it seemed like the whole situation with the club thing that took place at the last meeting, the first one I was at, it seemed like there'd been a lot, okay? But now it seems like everybody's on the same page with like, you know, the section C, the non-section C people are going to know what to expect. Nobody can say, well, then you let them do this, you let them do that, you know what I'm saying? So I always think like, it was painful, but something good came out of it, so. That's all.
All right, we have a motion to adjourn, please.
I move to adjourn the meeting at 7:59 PM.
Support. We have a motion by Rosenow, supported by Ms. DeVos, to adjourn the meeting at?
7:59.
7:59. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. We're out of here.